The regular council public hearing meeting to order. So can I have the adoption of minutes of July 7?
All in favor.
Contrary, that is carried.
Move council and committee, July 7 minutes.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, carried.
Move the minutes be adopted. Regular council then use July 7.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, carried.
Move minutes be received. Finance committee, July 7.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, carried.
Move the minutes for the public hearing, July 7.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, carried. And I'd like to motion to vary the agenda and bring in some corporate reports forward. R 129, 130, 131, 141, and 144.
I'll move those recommendations.
Second. Okay. All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. We'll start with R 129. We had our overview earlier today on the crime reduction strategy.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. Now, R 130, which is...
Climate action.
Hang on just a second here. 130, which is the Climate Action Review Incentive Program.
I'll move the recommendation to that.
Second.
Second.
All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. R 131, which is the Surrey Sustainable Charter Progress Report.
Move the recommendations.
Second.
Okay, Councilor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to point out just a couple of pieces in this report and to congratulate staff on particularly Anna Matheson, who's done a tremendous job on working on these matrices. There's 78 different matrices in total in 12 different sustainability themes, and it's all available for anyone to see on our website with a sustainability dashboard. And this is the main way that we can communicate out what's going on with our sustainability initiatives. And of those 78, Madam Mayor, there's 39 measures that are on track and stable and doing very, very well. There's 29 measures that don't have specific targets attached to them, and there's only four measures that we're working on for improvement at this point in time. So I think tremendous steps have been taken, and in the coming year, in 2015, we're going to be doing a complete revise to the Sustainability Charter, and these matrices will really help in attacking those goals for the coming year and for the update of the charter. So I think some great work has been done.
Okay, thank you. And I'll call the question. All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. Just to go back to R 129, our crime reduction strategy. I know our crime reduction strategy manager is here, Colleen Kerr, and we had an update today with all the good work that's being done in the community in terms of looking at housing and addictions and mental health issues, and as well the amendment to that that we'll be making for the addition of 95 police officers and another 20 community personnel. So I wanted to highlight that piece as well. So thank you very much. Okay, R 141, that is the City of Surrey biodiversity conservation strategy.
I'm happy to move that report, Madam Mayor.
Second. Councilor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to take a minute to point out how important this report and this strategy really is to the city. The biodiversity conservation strategy has been in the planning works since 2011. There's been a lot of public consultation. I see Deb Jack from Surrey Environmental Partners here, who has been instrumental in keeping our feet to the fire and moving this forward in a timely way, and many others who have worked on this. But just to give a really quick sense of what the biodiversity conservation strategy is, really it's to identify the biohabitat in the city and then to set conservation objectives for what we want to see with our biodiversity and our wildlife corridors and so on. So we identify the lands to be managed, and just to give council a perspective on this, there's about 10,200 acres in total that have been identified as very highly important biodiversity lands. And roughly 7,100 acres of that is already under city management, under city ownership. So that leaves about 3,100 acres, identified acres, to go. Now, that seems daunting, but about 2,000 of those acres are going to be acquired through the development process over the coming years, through riparian dedications and so on. So we're going to be acquiring a couple thousand of acres over the coming years as we build out. That still leaves about 1,100 acres that we have identified as being critically important and that we need to acquire. And so the report outlines some of the financial ways that we're going to look at acquiring those over the coming years, the different streams that we can look at to be acquiring those funds. And as some of those lands come up for potential development, at that point, we'll be able to make those acquisitions and keep those lands in perpetuity. So there's going to be over 10,000 acres when this is fully completed of natural land in perpetuity for the city. So it's extremely important, and it's also an extremely aggressive campaign. So I'm very pleased with it.
Thank you very much, and I know that I've also received feedback from many different environmental organizations, not only just in this city, but across the metro Vancouver area, because this is something that not many communities are moving forward with. And I think for us, this is the time to do it, because many other communities have already built out, and they don't have that opportunity. And biodiversity conservation is certainly something that is very important to all of us, especially future generations. So I want to thank everybody for all their good work in this initiative as well. So thank you. I will call the question. All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. Now, the addendum R 144, which deals with our Clean Technology Incentive Program review for Endurance Wind Power. We can get that on...
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Second. And thank you, Ms. Jones, our manager of economic development, for bringing this forward. Call the question. All in favor. Contrary, that is carried. All righty, getting into the public hearing portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk.
First bylaw is zoning amendment, bylaw 18256. The address is 14225, number 10 Highway. The applicant is the Board of Education for School District, number 36. Applicant is seeking to rezone the site by adding to it the existing Comprehensive Development bylaw 18076, which governs the former City Hall site. This will allow the new users to operate within the existing building.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18256? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
No.
Pardon me?
I'm the applicant.
Oh, okay. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call? Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Next bylaw is official community plan amendment, bylaw 18258, and zoning amendment, bylaw 18259. The address is 5980, 132nd Street. The applicants are Shamkar and Harpreet Chena. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the property from suburban to urban and rezone the site from half-acre residential to single-family residential in order to allow subdivision into four single-family lots.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18258? First call, second call, third and final call? And Madam, you were the applicant on the first one?
Yes.
Okay, so were you wanting to speak or...
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks very much for this opportunity. My name's Kerry Magnus, and I work with the Surrey School District as the Associate Director of Business Management Services. As you know, the school district has applied to rezone their former Surrey School District office that's across the street from the former City Hall. It's an existing three-story building on an existing site. No redevelopment is anticipated in the short term. The building has been on the site since 1964, and for the past 15 to 20 years, the school district struggled with inadequate facilities, having to install portables, and leave spaces all over the city of Surrey to house our staff. In 2011, Surrey School District completed and moved to a new building adjacent to Green Dimper's Park, consolidating offices from seven locations. As you know, the zoning bylaw allows for public uses such as public school use or municipal buildings in any zone. The reason the district is asking for this rezoning is twofold. Number one, the building is surplus to our needs, and we cannot rent it out to any outside organization other than the city of Surrey without rezoning. And number two, if the school district decides to sell the property, potential offers are always subject to rezoning. The owner's site servicing requirements basically are frustrating our potential sale of this site, since the city is the only organization that could purchase or use the building or site without rezoning. City staff advise that before rezoning can be completed, that there's a whole shopping list of items that must be completed. It's interesting to note that the city of Surrey's rezoning was not subject to any of these similar requirements. So land takings, significant site servicing, restrictive covenants for public art, restrictive covenants for setbacks. As you may know, districts all over the province are now being asked to contribute up to 50% of the value of capital projects. This translates to almost $8 million for a new elementary school and $25 million for a secondary school. This puts the Board of Education at a significant financial disadvantage in the ability to pay for upgrades required for this building. As part of the rezoning, I'm also asking you to consider to waive the engineering requirements for this rezoning as per the city's rezoning, waive the restrictive covenant for public art as per the city's rezoning, and waive the restrictive covenant regarding setbacks as per the city's zoning. Setback requirements come into play when a development permit or billing permit are required, since the city of Surrey does not have a similar restrictive covenant on their property. I would suggest this sets a precedent. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Okay, so I just to clarify a few of the items. Any city building does require public art, so we are subject to that requirement as well. In terms of setbacks and servicing, each site is different and unique unto themselves. So it depends on what is adequate for each and every one of every different site. And so there's no similar requirements on every single site, so they're different.
Well, generally, when you apply for a building permit, that's when the setbacks set in, or also a development permit. We're being asked to register a restrictive covenant on the property.
Right. So who wants to answer? Wait, we'll just clarify the... Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, the requirement for a Section 219 covenant for setbacks recognizes the building that is non-conforming today, and it allows the building to stay unless reconstruction occurs, and then the building needs to be cited in accordance with the zoning.
Right. Okay, so that building currently does not conform to the zoning requirements right now? So what we're doing through that process is allowing it to remain unless you tear it down, then it's subject to the zoning, the underlying zoning.
And if we did tear it down, it would be subject to a development permit probably, and a building permit, which would both see the setbacks kick in.
That's correct.
It just seems like it's onerous. It seems like it's one more...
Well, right now, that building doesn't conform.
Absolutely.
So we could just say, tear it down and start again, and then it will conform.
But City Hall doesn't...
You should say, "Thank you."
Okay, thank you. Thank you, but City Hall doesn't conform either.
Pardon me?
City Hall doesn't conform either, and the rezoning went through on November 25 last year without any similar requirements. So I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, so we'll give you the correct information there.
I would just like council to consider this, that's all.
Mr. Lamonteng, or Mr. Lalon?
Madam Mayor, one of the main differences is that the City Hall building is not for sale, and we're not preparing to sell it. We're leasing it, and so we're working with the lease tenants. Vis a vis this application, my understanding is that the school board was wishing to sell the property.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Great, thanks for your comments. Okay, Madam Clerk, we are on number three.
Did you finish with number two?
Yeah. Did you want to... Yeah, I called three times. You did get...
The other's open still, and I thought I...
Do you want... Okay, come speak. Deb, I wouldn't dare not allow you to speak.
Thank you. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680, 143th Street. I'm going to be speaking to several issues that are before council this evening with regards to this one. The proposal is that of 32 konifers, 23 will be demolished and nine will be kept. Of those two are going to be Douglas fir, or seven Douglas fir and two Western red cedar. Of the deciduous, six are sited. They're all going to be removed. Three of them happen to be Pacific dogwoods. Now, the issue here is that the valuation, because there are 12 proposed to replace, that means 46 in deficit at a price of $300 each. And Surrey Environmental Partners has brought up to council before the issue of inadequate valuation at $300 each. We've also brought up to council before our concern about the fact that we are presently valuing a tree that is 12 inches in diameter exactly the same and with the same value as a tree that is two, three, or more feet in diameter. It just simply isn't equitable, and insofar as the issue of biomass is concerned, and now that we are considering issues under the rubric of the biodiversity conservation strategy, this becomes even more important, and when we consider the whole concept of maintaining the matrix throughout the city. Very concerned with regards to this. Also, greater specificity would be required insofar as tree reports are concerned, so that we understand what size of a tree is being taken down and what it represents insofar as biological services are concerned, and how it participates in the green infrastructure network.
Okay.
So bring to your attention that, just based on this, but I will be addressing several others as well.
Okay, and maybe we'll just... Because I mean, that's an interesting point there. How do we evaluate? Who does the evaluation? Do we have a list and...
It's set at $300 per tree.
Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, I believe that is written in the Tree Protection Bylaw.
Okay, because it would seem to me that... I mean, that's a good point in terms of evaluating the trees at the same value, that proposed value. Maybe, Councilor Hayne, were you involved with the tree bylaw there? Maybe there's some rationale that we had that...
Yes, Madam Mayor, there was a reevaluation done of the tree bylaw, and recommendations were still coming through on that. But that's part of our work plan this year at the ESAC, is to have a second look at that tree bylaw and make any recommendations that the committee deems fit.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so that's going to come through the environmental advisory committee.
Right. The other aspect of that is that the replacement valuation, so that instead of having one-to-one for Alders and Cottonwood and two-to-one for all the rest of them, that it should be greater depending on the greater size that is being removed.
Okay, fair enough. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Planner? If we're on number three.
I changed my job. Zoning Amendment, bylaw 18264. The address is 15345, number 10 Highway. The applicant is 606200 B.C., Limited. The applicant is seeking to amend the existing Comprehensive Development bylaw 14510 in order to allow entertainment uses on the site. The proposed tenant, E-Xit, currently operates two franchise locations in British Columbia. The business offers the customers the opportunity to participate in real-life escape games in one of four themed rooms.
Okay, thank you. I have five people not wishing to speak that are against it, and one person that wants to speak. Erling Hetch, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And if there's anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw, if you can just make your way to the front, please.
Hello, Council. I live in Unit 41 Sullivan Gate, which is Town Council's complex backing right up to the same location where they want to have the entertainment units. We're concerned that with the hours and operation, it's going to create too much noise levels once people exit from the entertainment and the hours, so therefore I'm opposing the amendment.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, sir, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm the creator of Exit. My name is Justin. So I just want to clarify that even though our operation hour is quite long, so far we have been open since October, last October, and our customer has been... Has been really... Has been really good, having pretty good attitudes. And just want to clarify that we don't sell any alcohol. It's not what you might think what we are doing. So... Sorry, sorry, sorry.
What are you doing?
So you... Okay, okay. Because it's quite a new idea, so I need to think of a way to describe what we are actually doing.
Yes.
So what we do is we put our customers in a room, in a themed room. For example, what we are doing in our branch, we put our customer in a lost ship, in an ancient Egypt pyramid, in a prison, or in a lab, in a laboratory, which is quite creepy. So... Okay. So what our customer is doing inside our facility is that they have to use their intelligence as well as teamwork in order to escape from our room. It is basically a teamwork game as well as a team building facility. It's not anything that is unhealthy, and we do have quite a lot of reference, such as we do have a lot of corporate events hosting in our places, such as McDonald, Mercedes-Benz, RBC Bank, TD Bank, they are all our customers. It's just regular team building facility. The reason why we have a long operation hour is because we are too busy. We haven't fully... Our booking is fully booked every day, and sometimes people have to book three weeks to four weeks ahead. And also referring to the minister concerning about the noises, we do provide a sitting area, a resting area inside our facility. So we do provide a facility that they can actually talk about it, or chat about it inside our facility in order to prevent the noises. Thank you.
Okay, so your hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to midnight? Okay, so I note that, I'm just reading here, that at the present, there's other businesses there that are open... Well, Tim Hortons, okay. So you mentioned that you have been operating since last October?
Yes.
At this site?
At Richmond.
In Richmond?
Yes.
Okay. Is it like a virtual reality or...
Yes, basically, we bought online video games into real life. That's what we do. And we are currently a member of Tourism Richmond as well as the Chamber of Commerce in Richmond as well.
Okay. Sounds different. All righty, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18264? Please come forward. Please come forward, ma'am, sir. If there's anyone else speaking to this, could you please just make your way to the front? Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kelly Evans. I'm in Unit number 35, 5688, 152nd, which is directly behind. The issue is the other location you're referring to in Richmond isn't an industrial commercial area, it doesn't back onto a residential area. This literally would have a fence between where that comes out to the residential complex of 5688, 152nd. The people will be coming out at midnight, the noise activity will be there. The teams, the acoustics of the teams, if you actually go to the other location, he talks about a calming room. Well, when the people step out, all of the voice, the honking of the horns, and climbing on their corporate bus and driving away, is all noise it carries, and those locations, as I say, are corporate and industrial. This is a residential neighborhood. The Tim Hortons is a drive-through across the street, it does not back onto residential. Anything that comes along the residential side is a daycare, the drugstore, it's very limited. So we're used to having businesses that close within reasonable hours on the other side of our fence. It's just, it's quite... It's going to be quite a loud...
Okay, so are the other buildings that are there, is there anything else that's in there now?
No, you can see the fence, that's the landscape buffer in the fence, and those are our complexes. All that is, is that landscape buffer, that's our backyard and our fence, and that's the gaming.
Okay, but the entrance is not where the buffer is.
But the entrance, you come out, and there's a back gate, so everybody would be parked right there, and there would only be a matter of the distance of the building. It's not that big of a building, and here, the voices into the residential. His other location that he refers to is a commercial location, there's no...
Can we just back that out just a wee bit? Yeah, okay, there, thanks.
I mean, those... Yeah, it's not... There's two entrances in, there's an entrance in and an exit out, and all of the units on that side are going to be completely affected by people coming out at midnight and talking, and that's not too... He's got a... Inside that building, he's got a gaming where people are shooting guns and killing themselves. What kind of acoustics are in the building? You know? It's a gaming, so you go in, and within the building, they're going through and trying to find their ways through these mazes to get in and out. The acoustics within the building will be loud itself.
Have you been to the one in Richmond?
I've gone and checked it out. I haven't played the game, no, but I've gone and checked it out, and I was shocked at how noisy it was after midnight. That one's open, the one in Richmond is open until 2:00 in the morning. I was shocked at how noisy it was after midnight in the parking lot, and people are coming out wired, and they either won or they lost this game they've been playing.
Okay, but they're not using... I mean, they're using the front of the building.
But that is so close, their cars are literally parked. It's not that big of a building, and the acoustics will carry. It's not that far a distance between the buffer of the fence in the backyard and where the building exists. And that's a lot of noise.
What are in the buildings there now?
Daycare is on this end, there's some restaurants that close down at about 9:00, Pharmasave, a yoga studio which closes down, very quiet.
Notary public, and then there's a...
A notary and a chiropractor. The Tim Hortons is way out by Highway 10 in the other corner over here. So it's a pretty quiet side, and the zoning is that way because of the residential, it's right there.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Vilma?
I guess I'd just like to ask you, if you don't mind. So is the business located in there now, correct?
No, it's an empty building.
Okay, so in Richmond, when you went there, you experienced after midnight the noise?
Oh, I drove there specifically to see what was happening in the parking lot, because they said it was open until 2:00, and wanted to see what people were like coming out. And there was high energy, there was honking of horns, there was people that were wired, and that was it, you know, between 9:00 and 11:00. and that was it, you know, between midnight and twelve-thirty.
So you were there between midnight and twelve-thirty?
Yeah, and it stayed, and that one stayed open until two in the morning. So I couldn't imagine what it would be like when they're, with that kind of acoustics. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number one eight two six four? First call, second call, third, sir, did you want to speak?
You already did.
No, you've already spoken, I'm talking about the fellow behind you. Did you want to speak? No? Okay, third and final call, yep, okay, you can't speak twice. So if, if he wants to speak, that's fine. Okay, please just say your name and address for the record.
And the address is one five three four five Highway ten. I just want to say one thing, that, that, there, there is no, first of all, there's no shooting of guns or anything, it's just using your, like Justin was saying, it's using your teamwork and your intelligence to escape from a room, it's all, it's all, it's all mental. And, and I was going to say one more thing, there's no, I should mention that I own a Boston Pizza, and there's no, nothing against me opening up a Boston Pizza there tomorrow. So I find that very strange that I can open up a Boston Pizza there which serves alcohol till two in the morning, but I can't get, it's, you know, it's just, it's very strange to me that, that I am able to open up a BP in that, in that complex that serves alcohol and is open till two, but I'm having a difficult time, people have a problem with this business, which is just, yeah.
Counselor Gill?
I could just ask, how many people would be using this facility at any given time? What would your capacity be in the later hours?
Fifteen to twenty.
Justin was saying fifteen to twenty, you should, I think it's better that he answers this one.
Sir, can you speak into, I can't hear you. Fifteen to twenty-four people, you said?
Fifteen to twenty, yeah.
Okay. And what's the hours of operation?
Our operation hours is for weekend is from noon to one forty-five last game.
One forty-five, yeah, one forty-five AM, okay.
One forty-five AM?
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
The next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw one eight two six nine. The address is eight three one eight hundred and twentieth Street. The applicant is Earth King Forest Plaza Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from community commercial to comprehensive development in order to develop a four-story multi-tenant commercial office building.
Okay, thank you very much. Number, okay, is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number one eight two six nine? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
Official community plan text amendment bylaw one eight two five five. The address is one seven seven six three one seven eight three five sixty-second Avenue. Applicant is the city of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to declare the site a temporary commercial use permit area. In addition, a temporary use permit is being sought to allow for the temporary sale of firearms and ammunition during a three-day event at the Cloverdale Fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. I've got people's not, persons not wishing to speak, I have forty-two in support and zero against. Is there, is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number one eight two five five? Name and address, please.
Your worship, members of council? Good evening. My name is Hardy Staub, and I reside, I reside in the sunny city of White Rock.
Oh, then you have to leave, sorry Hardy, goodbye.
My address is one three six three eight Malabar Avenue. And yes, I dress warmly because I don't come that far north where you are. Your worship-
You know, you're on thin ice here, my man.
Your worship, I'm the volunteer spokesman for the B.C. Rod and Gun Show, which is catered for the outdoor enthusiastic, and will feature new products, services, demonstrations, attractions, and more from manufacturers, dealers, retailers, nonprofit organizations, and of course, the swap meet. In essence, it's a hunting and fishing and camping trade show. Part of this hunting, fishing, and camping trade show is the selling of swapping of hunting, fishing, and outdoor camping equipment. It is a place where the private seller can sell or trade their used or unwanted gear, whether it's a couple of firearms, or some archery equipment, or unwanted fishing or camping gear. All of this takes place in a neutral, secure sauce. It's a three-day event that will have twenty-four-hour security, and the Canadian Firearms Officer, that is the RCMP. In addition, the provincial firearms officer and his staff, who will be on the premise, premises of the show during these three days. And they will verify that the both, and the sellers, and the buyers have the required licenses to possess any firearms and the ammunition. To be clear, each seller and each buyer must carry and show that he or she have a firearm position acquisition license, which is commonly known as a PAL, as is required by the firearms legislation of a country, Canada. To try or possess any firearm and not have a PAL is an offense under the Canada Criminal Code. As council should also know, this license is only issued to a person that has undergone a federal-approved gun safety course, which includes a written and practical test. And once this training is completed, the applicant is required to submit an application to the Canadian RCMP firearms program. The applicant is then subjected to a thorough investigation and a background check. Based on the result of that investigation and the check, the RCB will then, the RCMP will then issue or refuse to issue the required license. The process, once an applicant is received, usually takes about three months, and often sometimes, often more. Many people, perhaps even some members of council, confuse the traditional Canadian Rod and Gun Show, such as ORS, with those held in the U.S., where apparently, according to CNN, you can sell any type of firearm and ammunition by anyone to anyone. No license, or background, or criminal record shown is required for such an event over there. In other words, anyone can walk into an American Rod and Gun Show and buy a firearm, and in many instances, these people do not even have to show any form of identification. Members of council, as I described earlier, this cannot happen and will not happen in our event. Your worship, planning of this show started way back in two thousand and twelve, about two years ago, when Kent Archibald, who's speaker behind me, he's the owner and the operator of the firearms training center, contacted Bill Reed about the possibilities of building a firing range and a possible co-ownership with the RCMP. As council will recall, it didn't, never materialized. Bill, Mr. Surrey, who was a friend of mine for over thirty years, and as he was a friend to many of this council, was enthusiastic about holding a Rod and Gun Show in Cloverdale. Unfortunately and sadly, this community and his many friends lost him when he passed away last year. So presently, the show is being organized by Kent Archibald, owner of the firearms training center in Cloverdale, Paul Orazetti, the executive director of the Cloverdale BIA, Stephen Betnash, the publisher of the Cloverdale magazine. And this year, I joined the team as a volunteer. Council has received a four petition, I think you got it last, last time I was here, which was signed by one thousand supporters, and many more sending more petitions to us as we speak here tonight. Council has also received the report of the city planning department, who in turn also received comments from your legal department, your engineering department, and the Cloverdale RCMP, along with a British Columbia firearms officer who's also an RCMP, but he's appointed by the federal government. None of these had any objections regarding this application. As I said, the report recommends approval of the application. At this point, your worship, I would especially like to thank a staff member of your planning department, I'm talking about Ms. Lee Anne Pitker, who worked very hard to put this matter to council before council assumed it was possible. Your worship and members of council, I found her to be a true professional member of your city staff, and we respectfully ask that the mayor and council pass on our appreciation to her. Your worship, a professional and hard-working staff serves Surrey, and Lee Anne is a fine example of this fact. While I'm mad at saying thank you, I'd also like to thank Counselor Bruce Haynes for meeting with her, with me and Mr. Archibald to find out how to proceed, because the first answer we said, no way. And thank you very much, Counselor Haynes. As I just said, the planning report to council regarding this permit recommends that this zoning text bylaw amendment be approved. Council has also been advised that due to the time it takes to obtain approval, we had to change the date of this show. There's simply no time. In March, we had about fifty percent of all the tables and facilities sold. Then came when we couldn't do it, and it took this long, and many of the vendors and people had made other arrangements. So we had to change the date of the show to the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth of April of this coming spring in order to produce a world-class event. Now, I, I reported this to the planning department, they, I understand are recommending to council that the bylaw, if you so wish, will pass, and they will come back in September with another planning report with a change of date. Okay? Okay, we want to make it a world, a world-class event, and it will be. Council did pass introduction first and second reading, and hopefully will vote yay to a third and final adoption rating after the public hearing tonight. Your worship, I have had many, many years of sitting in a chair such as yours, and I also know that public hearings can go on and on, and well into the night.
So can the speakers.
And you have many-
I can say that, he's a former colleague.
And you have many more items on your agenda tonight. It is our job to show that we have public support of the community. We did this partially by presenting the previously mentioned petition. But perhaps I could be of help to council by showing the support this event has. Hopefully, this will shorten the length of this meeting without curbing the right of everyone here tonight to voice their opinion. And with this in mind, I would ask that all people in the audience here tonight that came to support the B.C. Rod and Gun Show, stand up and show council that you're in favor of the Rod and Gun Show. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your worship, you are probably happy to hear that, that is all I want to say tonight. And ask if there are any questions, which either I or Kent Archibald or president will answer to a best of ability. Are there any questions?
Counselor Hepburn?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And just through you, Madam Mayor, to the planner, sorry, Mr. Solberg, I have a question of the planner. If we approve this event, is there a way that we don't have to go through a council process to do it the next time? Is there a text amendment to the zoning bylaw or to something that would allow it to happen in the future?
Mr. Plen?
Through you, Madam Mayor. What is before you is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and such event will still be required to go through a temporary use permit. Now, as we mentioned earlier, the temporary use permit, we're changing the process as part of the new OCP, so that would not require a public hearing, it would require notification.
He would come to council but not require a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So let me just ask a quick question, so I understand, I couldn't quite hear you, gentlemen. In other words, you could pass the bylaw tonight and wait for the planning report in September for the change of date?
No, Hardy, we know all that, the, the, I think what we're a little confused with, or I shouldn't say confused, but it just seems like an onerous process to hold an event.
It has.
To go through the whole rezoning process, the OCP, like, it just seems really onerous. So I, you know, myself and I think many councillors, when we, when we started at land use, we were wondering if there was any other process that we could undertake that would be more expedited, you know, that would expedite your process, but for whatever reason, we can't. So it's got to be, it's got to be through this process in terms of an OCP amendment and all the rest of that, so.
Thank you very much, and thanks for listening. And Madam Mayor, I've known you for many years. It's going to be sad that you're going to leave the chair, however, I wish you all the luck in your future endeavors. I think I know what they are.
Charlie, you don't know a thing. Good to see you, Hardy. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak, sure, name an address for the record?
I certainly do. My name is Kent Archibald. My wife Karen and I operate the firearms training center out of Cloverdale. We're very, very fortunate to have three other very highly-trained five-star instructors working with us. We take our training very, very seriously. We graduate lots of students every year in the firearms safety, hunting, and the core program, which stands for conservation, outdoor, recreation, education. I'm a master instructor with B.C. Wildlife Federation. We, a lot of people hate hunting, they do, they, oh, that's disgusting. Well, we don't shoot bambi, we harvest them humanely and ethically.
Oh, you know what, I'm an animal lover, you can't talk like that.
Okay, well, I won't say it again.
I don't want to hear it.
I'm an animal lover too, and which is why we are very, very sensitive over how an animal is dispatched. Most of us don't like to eat growth hormones, antibiotics, and the meat that we buy in a safe way. Anyway, I won't go into that.
That's true, yeah, no, I get all that.
Hardy pretty much said, first off, I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity here today to try and present our, our idea to you. We think that there's never been an event like this before in Cloverdale. It is a swap meet, a flea market of used, pre-owned, whatever you want to call it, camping gear, of ATVs, chainsaws, winches, axes, power tools, bows, and yes, there will be some firearms there, I'm sure. Grandpa's old shotgun that nobody wants anymore, what do you do with it? Well, you don't phone up, we're not allowed to advertise them in the paper, online, or on Craigslist anymore. They must be done in a neutral area where nobody's offended, they go there maybe just for that purpose. Anybody that sells a firearm naturally has to be licensed, which is what we do. If you want to buy a firearm, you've got to have a license to show, and Canada firearms will be there, present, verifying licenses are active. The RCMP, very strong presence is going to be there, we welcome them there. What else have we got in here? The, the fact that Surrey has a bylaw prohibiting the sale of firearms sadly isn't going to do anything. The, the people that, that you hear about every day, and sadly, it is just about every day, the targeted hits in drug wars and so on like that, you hear guns, drugs, gangs, that's not us. We're at the other end of the scale. The people that are doing all that, doing all that kind of stuff, they're, they're low-life, bottom-feeding scumbags. Pardon me for saying that, but they are.
Thank you.
Those are not us. We're at the opposite ends.
Better you say it than me.
We, we, we're disgusted and outraged every time we hear that somebody's used a firearm like that. That's just not what we do at all. You know what, those people are so low, they got to look up to see the bottom. And they are not us, this is not the kind of people that we are. This is what you hear about. You don't hear about trap shooting and skeet shooting and biathlon shooting, and oh, it's a great sport if it's done properly, and this is what we do. We are the good guys, we're, we're law-abiding, concerned citizens, and we really beg the council to maybe revisit their decision to view firearms badly. You know, they've been around for over eight hundred years, firearms, in the late twelfth century. They are not going to go away, they will not. No matter how much you, or me, or anybody else in this room might like to see that, it's not going to happen. So we've got to learn how to live with them, they're here. And this is what we're all about, and a lot of other schools that, that do what we do too, and I'm sure they're as dedicated to safety as we are. So with that, I might ask, I would like to add, please don't be scared of a firearm, be scared of the guy holding it. Be scared of the guy holding it, not us. Thank you very much again, Mayor and council.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number? Okay, so, I mean, we've got, I've got forty-some, I think I've already said, 42 people in support of it. We've got petitions. I don't have anybody against it that has signed up. And maybe we might, if there's anybody against it, maybe we'll give them an opportunity. Otherwise, is the intention to have everybody come up and say they support it? Okay, I just wanted to ask that question. Go ahead, name an address for the record.
I can't speak for that, but. My name is Dewan Riordan, I am from Surrey, 138870th Avenue. I have two items I want to tackle first. We all go through the core program, conservation, outdoor, recreation, okay? We have a love of animals, we have a love and an appreciation for the outdoors. I was raised, my father was insistent on having respect and a love and appreciation for the outdoors. We do respect it. The people you're worried about aren't coming to this show. They aren't. We're licensed, we can't buy these things, and you're focusing on firearms. It's an outdoor show. There will be other things there as well. Please just respect that, okay? So, yes, definitely in support of it, it's only an outdoor show. Yes, you can buy it, but boy, is it ever governed. Second thing, a little closer to home, is there any way we can get you to rescind your resignation? Please?
Oh, okay.
Oh, thank you, okay, we win. Thanks, your worship, appreciate it.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay, name an address for the record.
All right, my name is Tracy Beharal, and I live in North Delta, 7620115th Street. And I thought it would just be a really good idea to get up as a woman, a small, little, tiny woman, and I shoot, and I hunt, and I'm a member of IPSEC, NFA, and the Pork Acquintum Hunting and Fishing Club. I love the sport. That's what we're talking about right there. That's the PAL, the Possession Acquisition License. Anybody who goes to one of these shows has to actually present one right there in person, complete with horrible dreadful picture. And that says that you have no criminal past, that you are allowed to purchase firearms and ammunition. Without that, you don't get either of those two things. So, and the only other thing I'd like to say is that, I know we all say that it's a good thing to get out and share one another's cultures and passions and learn more about one another so that we can dispel myths and harmful, harmful kind of negative images. And I would like to say that, hey, you know, come out to the show, see who we are, enjoy it, and maybe you never know, you might want to take up the sport yourself someday. But that was all, I promise I make it short. There it is, okay, thank you so much for listening.
Great, thank you very much for your comment.
Madam Mayor and council, Paul Orzetti, 10732 Hazel Court, Surrey. I'm one of the faces of the partners, and I wanted to just share what the group has spoken about. My role in this exercise is I'm an event organizer, and as such, I was brought into the group to help them organize a professional event. I'm a relative newcomer to shooting. I've been working with Kent on a project that we were hoping to do in the future, and along the way, I learned how to trap shoot. I don't shoot animals, but I do shoot clay pigeons. And in this whole process, we wanted to demonstrate that the group was very professional, honest. It's a part of tradition that hunting occurs in this community, and I think they wanted to do it with the most utmost respect so that you understand, we're not trying to convert or sway people. There are people who've been doing this for a long time. I have family members who've hunted for many, many years. They're very responsible people, and we wanted to put on a first-class show that you would be very proud to have in this city and that families would feel very welcome. One other component that we'd also discussed is working with the RCMP to have an amnesty table that people who did want to bring in firearms that did not want to be used could bring them in and surrender them. So, on that note, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18255? Please, sir. Okay, is there anyone after this gentleman? If there is, please make your way to the front.
Good evening. First of all, I'm a very nervous public speaker, so I apologize for that. I'm a visitor to your fine country from the U.S., and for what it's worth, I'm in favor of this gun show, but the previous gentleman spoke about CNN. Many of us refer to that as Comedy News Network where I'm from. To think that we can go to a gun show in the U.S. and buy and sell guns without proper paperwork, without going through an FFL dealer, you make the purchase, the FFL dealer has to hang on to the firearm for 10 days. They do a total background check on you. You can't have a gun if you're a past felon. It's not a simple thing like a lot of liberal news media down there would like you to think. It's nothing like you reading the newspapers. If you go, anyone that happens to be in the U.S., go to a gun show, and you'll see it's ran pretty much like these people outline, it's very controlled. Background checks, everything is very thorough. And also, like the man says, if you do away with citizens' firearm ownership, all you're doing is making it much easier for the criminals. Thank you very much for a moment.
Thank you, thank you very much for all your comments. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18255? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, madam clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18263, civic address is 1769065A Avenue. The applicant is Bayshore Canada Ventures, ULC Incorporated. Applicant is seeking to rezone the property from 1-acre residential to business park in order to construct an industrial building. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought in order to reduce the front yard setback.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18263? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, madam clerk.
Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 18265 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18266. Address is 1807267th Avenue and 6677181st Street. The applicant is 0970121BC Limited, Roxanne Dowden, and Colleen Fisher. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from suburban to urban and rezone the site from 1-acre residential to single-family residential 12 and single-family residential in order to allow subdivision into approximately 16 single-family lots.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18265? First call, second call, I see you, Deb.
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680143th Street. In reviewing this planning report, the proposal is to keep two of 17 deciduous trees, and one of those is a big-leaf maple, and keep six of 17 conifers, which is 35%. Once again, the whole issue of tree size looms large. And in looking at the diagram, I am wondering about the possibility of the retention of eight of those trees that are slated to be destroyed, possibly nine. Can we see the site, then?
What I did was take that and colored in green, pretty pathetically, I must admit, about that which I was wondering.
Okay.
Oh, it doesn't look so bad as I thought.
Okay, the green means what? And the blue means what?
I'm sorry, the blue was supposed to have been covered with green. The blue and the green are the trees about which I was wondering why they hadn't been indicated as being able to be conserved.
Okay.
There is one that looks as if it might, I'm not too sure what those parallel lines are at the edge of the road unless that is a driveway. Is that correct? Okay, I got that one right. Then perhaps the one that's on the longitudinal cul-de-sac with the parking island, perhaps that one isn't possible to be conserved. But I do continue to wonder about the others.
Okay.
No, I see the one on number three, because if that's a driveway, then it makes sense that that one would have to go out. But then, I wonder why the one at the opposite corner on the third number-three lot would have to come out and be replaced by something else, yes.
Okay, we can have a look at that.
The two trees at the corner of lot number six at the streets. Then again, there's one at the point at which number five and number six lots meet, and also the one that is halfway down the end of number six. The one that is, I ought to have numbered these, and I apologize for that. Of course, hindsight's perfect science. The one that is in the middle of the, and back of lot number four, that one, that, correct? And then the one that's straight down from it that I've got on green. And it's close to the one that's to be protected. So, no answer to that?
Okay, can we, well, I mean, they'll have to look through all of the, you know, have an arborist look at that, but can we keep that that you've drawn up on?
Oh, surely. Once again, I apologize, it's such a mess.
Second? All in favor, contrary, carried? Okay, so if we can keep that, well, okay.
Thank you. And in addition, Linda Stromberg asked me if I would speak to this matter. Her daughter is 19, and she's at a family dinner, and unable to be here. Her address is 6617181st Street, here in Surrey. Her concern is that she notes of the 17 conifers on the site, the applicant is attempting to retain seven. My numbers, I believe, said a different number. It's her understanding that two of the conifers will be put at risk due to fill requirements on the site. She would therefore ask council to instruct staff to consider opportunities and alternatives that might be better, or might better ensure the survivability of the two significant and healthy conifers located within the fill areas. In addition, she notes that of the seven big-leaf maples, they're attempting to save one, and according to the detailed arborist report, this tree, which is located along the property line abutting 67th Avenue, is in poor health. Given its species and the associated risks, she would like to know from staff if this tree can be reasonably and safely retained or not. And as an addendum to that, I do recall that in some instances, staff advise that when there's a tree in poor condition, if it's given some loving care and nutrition, then it is able to be doing okay. So, thank you for my being able to submit what Linda said.
Thank you very much, Deb. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18265? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, madam clerk? Oh, sir, are you for 18265? Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Dexter Haravi from Hunter Lead Engineering. Madam Mayor, members of staff, I'd like to respond a couple of the questions that are, come up. I wanted to let you know that we have taken an extensive analysis with the intention of retaining as many trees as possible. Right of the bed, the tree that was on lot number three, cherry plum, on the northwest side, we're going to be saving that tree. And we're going to be also looking at ways to, you know, move the fill that was proposed so that we can retain as many, two more trees there. And I've got the arborist here who can actually, you know, answer any detailed questions as well. So, there was a question, question about the trees on the northeast corner of lot number six. Those are in poor condition.
Oh, on the northeast corner of lot six?
Could I just get your name and address for the record?
Max Rathburn, Diamond Head Consulting, certified arborist. On lot six, the two trees in question there are both red alder trees, found unsuitable for retention. And can we go back to the map there with the colors that the lady brought up? So, we are, several of the trees that she mentioned have been revisited lately, and we're revising the arborist report to retain, I believe, four more trees than the original plan showed. And that will be submitted in a few days.
Okay, thank you, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18265? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, madam clerk?
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18257. The address is 1681 Ocean Park Road. The applicant is Erwee and Catherine Dindo. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to single-family residential Oceanfront in order to permit the development of a single-family dwelling on an Oceanfront lot.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18257? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, madam clerk?
Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 18267 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18268. The address is 14605 Winter Crescent. The applicant is Emmanuel's Opus Development Limited and Rivers Dance Developments Limited. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the property from suburban to urban to multiple residential and rezone the site from general agriculture and 1-acre residential to comprehensive development in order to develop 66 townhouse units and 73-unit four-story apartment building with underground parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18267? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Siobhan Johnston, 3435148th Street. Our biggest concern in our neighborhood is King George is not double-laned here, so it's going to be double-laned. It's double-laned on either side of this where Wintercrest is. So, there's Crescent Road, and then there's Wintercrest. So, when they double-lane King George, they won't be put, I assume they're not going to be putting a light in there so people can turn left and right. So, people will only be able to turn right and head to North Surrey. So, what that means is everyone, the 140 houses that are going to be their homes, will have to drive up Wintercrest, onto 148, to the light, and then out. And we're wondering how that's going to work for us, because that's 200 cars probably through our neighborhood every day, at least one trip.
Okay, Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, we are planning on putting a traffic signal at Winter Crescent, at King George. We are also looking at improving with double-laning of King George for a longer stretch. It's in our 10-year plan for extension, and that's part of the plan for this project as well, to review that, to see at what time that has to be implemented.
Okay.
So, it would go through in a 10-year plan at the same time that the apartments went in, or we're assuming that the 200 cars are going to drive through, and then in 10 years, we'll have a light?
No, I don't think that was what I heard, but...
Okay.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor? Engineer?
When I reference the 10-year plan with regards to the funding that we have available, and we are planning on doing that traffic signal in a shorter term.
Okay, when you mean shorter term, what does that mean?
We'll, we'll be looking at the warrant from what the, what the impact will have from this development, and that's part of the analysis, that detailed analysis for this development.
Okay, okay, thank you. Perfect, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18267?
Mayor and council, Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners. Of the 32 deciduous trees listed, they will all be demolished. Of the 32 deciduous trees listed, they will all be demolished. Of 74 conifers, only two are going to be retained, they're red cedars. Again, we have the issue of size, valuation, biodiversity value, contribution to the green infrastructure network, and so on. The report does say that fill is an issue, and I understand from the report that it's going to be 6.6 feet. However, I do recall that on the development that was done on 60th Avenue, I can't recall the cross street, but it's certainly west of 152, they established tree wells on the fill area, and they have been quite successful. I periodically am driving by there and am able to see how well the trees are going. Gosh, that's an accomplishment.
Yeah, thank you. Can we, can we just get our cellphones off, people? Thank you. Okay, sorry, Deb, go ahead.
So that, I'm wondering about all of the loss of all of these sighted trees. And I'd like to comment that it's a huge biomass and habitat that we'll be losing for this development. And I note, the president of White Rock Surrey Naturalists advises that she's done Christmas bird counts in this area, and that there is a decent species count, including owls, that she has been directly involved in recording. This is a huge undertaking, by the way, the Christmas bird count that's done in our area. I also note that the new trees listed do not include native trees. However, interestingly, at one point, under the Sustainability, Sustainable Development Checklist, it says that natural landscaping, including indigenous plants, trees, and shrub species, will be put in there. Well, it's an interesting contradiction as far as I can see. So I'm also wondering, where is, pardon me, where is going to be the access to the river walk that the public is going to be able to take? Do we have a layout of the? Because if this is going to be a community benefit, then the community needs to know how to access that walk in order to be able to engage and enjoy the river, of which we have very few walks in Surrey, regrettably. And I read that there's going to be some kind of a connection with.
Is there the connection?
Yeah, there's a proposed walkway along the river. I'm just looking for the details of the connection through the site. Perhaps the applicant can refresh my memory.
Okay. We'll get the applicant to answer some.
Okay. I must admit that on the developed area to the east, there is a line that appears to go down the east side of that particular development, and there's a riparian area there, and then intersects and seems to go along. But there's a block off in the aerial mapping, so I'm not altogether sure if indeed it's, I assume that there's some kind of connection. But I'm wondering, of course, about the issue of signage. And it seems to me that there's an indication here that this walk along the river extends another walk along, but it's not clear, once again, where that is and how that all connects. And I think that's really important to consider, especially as this plan is proposing these things to be public benefits, community benefits.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The, the walkway connection along the river is connecting to the project adjacent to the east. And if you see on that map here, you see the trail that connects to Winter Crescent. So this is a phased development, the entire trail, but it does connect to Winter Crescent through the project next door.
Okay, so that trail system with the one next door.
Eventually, it'll go west towards Elgin Heritage Park and the Seadam, just west of the Seadam, that trail exists and you can go around the Nico Wind Golf Course all the way to the west side of Elgin Heritage Park. So that's part of the trail system on the south side of the Nico Meco River.
Okay. How do we get across King George? Respectfully, I don't, I don't see where the connection is. Does it go around the?
Mr. Lamontang?
Madam Mayor, this would be looked at when the bridge gets redeveloped. So we don't have the properties yet, so that's not the highest priority right now to detail design the connection across King George Boulevard.
Thank you. But it certainly would be a nice walk, even if it's got an end at the bottom of this presenting development for people to know about, to be able to have that connection there. I certainly did not realize it was there. The other question was the issue of rainwater harvesting, which came up at the design panel. I could not find a response to that. I thought it was a good idea, given the fact that we are entering longer and hotter summers. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you very much for your comment. Now, I think the applicant is here to address some of those.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Maciej Dembek from Barnett Dembek Architects. I can address some of these questions. We are filling the site up to eight feet in a lot of places. The whole, the whole site is on a floodplain essentially, and exactly the same as was done on the CD zoning right to the east of this site, it's being raised by about eight feet to get above the 100-year flood levels, otherwise it's dangerously low. With tree wells that are, you know, up to eight feet deep, I mean, they would be extremely dangerous, you know, children could fall in them, that kind of thing. So, and frankly, they would have to be extremely large. It would be impossible for a tree to be viable in that kind of a, a new, newly imposed situation.
Is it all eight feet?
Pretty, well, the townhouse portion of the site, which is north, perhaps Planner could put the proposed overall site plan on. Yeah, there's the extension of Winter Crescent, which is actually intended to become Crescent Road in the future. North of that on the townhouse portion, that is up to eight feet deep.
Up to eight feet.
South of it, we're actually cutting into the hillside where the condominium buildings are, the apartment buildings. And of course, there's all underground parking in there, we can't retain trees in there. Right on the corner is where we've actually, you can see we've jogged the underground parking to try to get some, some sort of tree retention to happen on a site where it's really difficult to make it happen.
But it's not all eight feet straight across?
No, no. From the New Road, north.
Okay, so what's the lowest fill on there?
Oh, you're actually cutting by the time you're at the New Road into the, like, into existing grade at that point. But all along the west side and the north side, it's up to eight feet deep.
Okay, because I guess my point is, is that there's, I mean, there's applications where we've seen tree wells in that are, you know, if you've got, that are three feet or four feet and have the grate on it, you know, especially if it's significant trees, and they last very well and there's no.
I'm not an arborist, but I seriously doubt the vibe.
I've done it on my property, I did it 21 years ago, and it's still standing.
But see, see how the vast majority is a very low elevation?
Yeah, that, and that's my question, like, where, how does it, how does it?
Well, see where the contours begin?
Yeah.
That's, like, up to that point, we're filling eight feet. So anything in there which is actually very low, very wet, and the trees are used to growing in very low, very wet circumstances, there's no way they could thrive because once you remove all that, those trees would die. And I've seen applications that we've worked on where we tried to maintain trees that were in that kind of a scenario previously, and they, they just don't make it. On the south end of the site, where you see the contours happening, that's where possibly, if we could find a tree or two that was worthwhile, it might be possibly right along the road extension, like, right where we hit the grade, the cut and fill match.
Can we overlay the tree survey on top of that?
Well, that's an old site plan, actually. But, but that's probably good for, for our purposes. The grouping, how would I describe this? The entry to the site, the, on this particular version, that is towards the southeast, right by your pen. Yep, nope, 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 a little higher, right there. This, that grouping, possibly there might be something in there that we could retain if they are worthy of retention. We would have to get the arborists, of course, to take a look at that and examine that.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's, that's basically where the cut and fill lines meet at that point. But to the south of that is all cuts, to the north of that is all fill. So there's maybe some in that grouping in that area. We could certainly explore that to, to see if it's viable and workable.
Okay, Councilor, how many did you have?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, just through to you, to the delegation. Does that fill put you at parity with a development to the east?
Yes.
That amount, so you're all putting yourself higher on the floodplain than the development immediately?
We would, we would match the grades of the development adjacent to us on the east side.
Okay.
So we're filling to match what they have to fill to match.
To match, thank you.
Yes. I should add the river walk, and it even shows on this site, if you can pull it down a bit. Yeah, we are proposing to add the river walk along the river, and there is no fill in that area, and we are retaining whatever trees are possible in the river walk area. Like the Planner was saying earlier, it stops at the west property line, eventually, hopefully with a future application to the west, which is, I believe, underway. It could be extended, but at this time, there is no extension. There was a comment about rainwater harvesting on the apartment site, there is a large underground parking, and that has to, will have a minimum of 18 feet of topsoil on there, so which that naturally retains a lot of water. So we're hoping and relying on that to help alleviate rainwater issues, that kind of thing. If there's any more questions, I'm certainly able to comment.
So, so I, can you clarify that for me? I think the question from the delegation was about rainwater harvesting, which is different than putting fill in to collect the rainwater.
This isn't, it's not the fill, it's the topsoil on the underground parking slab.
Okay.
I could let the.
Well, rainwater harvesting is different than that, though.
It's the collection of rainwater, right?
Yeah.
And the fill, by being 18 inches deep of topsoil, collects and retains rainwater. I mean, has that capability, right? Perhaps the landscape architect could comment on that?
Yeah, perfect.
My name is Meredith Mitchell with M2 Landscape Architecture. I can try and speak to some of these issues in regards to stormwater management and the rainwater harvesting. So for the actual condo area below, as you said, it is underground parking. We are providing at least a minimum of 18 inches, if not a little bit higher, in those areas. We have done quite a bit of research when it comes to actual water saturation up to field capacity. It actually does retain a significant amount of rainwater, which is then detained in the soil used by the plant material, absorbed, evapotranspiration, the rest of it. And then eventually, what is remaining and not used will eventually drain down to storm. It is a significantly less percentage than what is falling from the air. That being said, it is quite a dense site, so therefore, the green space is less than what is existing at the moment. For the townhouse area, it's a high-density site, we were not able to put bioswales in, which would be a normal rain garden bioswale situation, which is what a lot of people anticipate when it comes to rainwater harvesting. Now, in the same situation here, because this is on grade, that means that we're essentially putting new soil on top of existing soil. We are being able to, the water that does fall into the landscape areas will percolate down to existing condition and then go into the existing slate soil per se. It is reduced just due to the high density of the site. We do have a few opportunities in the walkway, and this comes down to another, the comment that another individual had, when it comes to walkways down through the site. There is actually a walkway that goes from Crescent Road and then through the site and then goes down to an access, down to the slough. It is part of the development and generally going to be used for the development itself, but at this stage, it is not going to be locked and can be open to the general public if people know about it, essentially. But at this stage, right now, because of the amount of fill requirements for the site, there is actually going to be a fair amount of soil being installed on the site. And we do have potential that perhaps we could add a few more bioswales in the center core walkway area, down to the amenity area. The site is generally sloping from Crescent Road down to the river.
Okay.
Hopefully, that answers your questions.
Great, no questions? Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to?
Can I just add one more comment, please?
Sure.
The developer in this case, Poets, I got the right one. The developer in this case is also owns and operates a man charity group, and they, they personally have planted, have supplied and planted 4,800 trees in Surrey Parks, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18267? Please state your name and address for the.
Yeah, my name is Ed Boragard, 2462 139th Street. I just wanted a bit of clarification on the exit, the road system, because when I looked at Surrey's capital plan that you advertised in the newspaper, I thought I had seen a capital program item for this year to take King George Boulevard between Crescent Road and 32nd Avenue to ultimate arterial width. But it sounds like what was said earlier is that maybe years off.
Yes. Yeah, that was in the capital plan. I think you had mentioned it was in the 10-year capital plan.
Well, I saw it advertised as a program for this year's.
For this year? Okay, maybe we can get a comment on that, Mr. Engineer?
Yeah. Yes, the wide thing is in the capital plan. The widening for King George is in the capital plan. This signal is not yet in the capital plan for this year. That's what we will be evaluating as part of this project.
Okay, because my concern here is that King George Boulevard is just this mess of two-lane section, four-lane section, two-lane section, four-lane section, six-lane section, and that's a very dangerous situation. If you're going to take all the traffic, bring it out to a new light where there's a little bit of two-lane between two four-lane sections, you're going to make that road unpassable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18267? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 18270 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18271. The addresses are 3100 3217 3231, 152nd Street, 3216 Croydon Drive, and a portion of 15110 32nd Avenue, and a portion of some closed road. The applicant is Potter's Farm and Nursery, VC Transportation Financing, Ed Holden, William Ringer, Torvan Developments in the City. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from suburban to commercial and rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development in order to develop a four-story commercial building with underground and, and surface parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 18270? First call, second call, Deb?
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners, 7680 143th Street. Concern here is with regards to the parking lot. Wondering if there's going to be enough space for the trees to be able to grow properly. Because when they're too small, they become tree coffins, and we addressed this several years ago with regards to several developments with, such as this. Also wondering if the trees that are going to be planted are going to be a big canopy. Because the issue is that shade reduces ground ozone, which develops when the surface of the asphalt connects with the car and the hot sun is blazing down. Other chemicals are also released by, from the vehicles on the hot sun exacerbated by the asphalt. If you have cooling for cars, then that means the ACs in the cars aren't used because they're not too hot. Provides for cleaner air for customers. In addition, I've read research that indicates that if people can come out for cars that are cool, they stay in the shops or whatever longer. Wondering also how, what kind of processes we have for monitoring how the trees in these developments continue over time. Because so often I drive by these places, see that their trees are small after umpteen years, they don't seem to be doing much of anything, or, regrettably, some places have really pruned them so radically that they become nothing more than lollipops in shape and not contributing very much to the biodiversity of our city, to the tree canopy or anything else. That was, should indicate, however. That was, um, should indicate, however, that, um, was happy to see that they're gonna have bioswells, and noted that they're going to put in a hundred forty-six new trees, and that's wherein this current concern relies.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And, uh, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18270? First call, second call, third and final call, next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
His official community plan amendment bylaw 18272 and zoning amendment bylaw 18273. The addresses are 2350, 2360, 153rd Street, and then 2353, 2359, 153A Street. The applicant is the Semiamu Foundation, and the applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from urban to multiple residential and rezone the site from single-family residential to comprehensive development in order to develop a four-story apartment building. In addition, the development variance permit is being sought to reduce the amount of parking spaces to eighty-two spaces.
Thank you very much. I have, uh, yes, yep. Okay, I have persons not wishing to speak, um, in support of sixteen here, twelve here, in support one against, and then people, uh, then there's a, a long speaking order for people that are in favor, and we have two that are against. So first, I will, um, Paul Wells, here. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Wells, I live at 2299 153A Street, and originally I came here to speak against the, uh, the new proposed, uh, structure. But after seeing the type of people that it, uh, that it helps, and, uh, having lived in the area for fit, on 153A Street for fifteen years, uh, the Semiamu House has been a very good, uh, corporate citizen, uh, they've sort of worked into the neighborhood rather than, uh, becoming something that's sort of extra to the neighborhood. Um, I wonder, I've got two pieces of paper that might, um, if I could get that showing up on the overhead? Could you show it first one first, please? So while I'm not against the development, um, I just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention, um, the current situation. At the top, you have Twenty-fourth Avenue, um, do we have a, a laser pointer at all that could use, or?
Well, we don't have a laser pointer, what's the, we have, we'll direct staff with the pan.
Magic blue, magic blue pen, if you keep going to the right, and then down, stop, okay, that, um, that is the entrance and exit to the parking garage, uh, for eighty-two or eighty-one spaces that will dump onto 153A Street. And if you, uh, move up about an inch, and then to the right, the, that is, uh, the Bears and, uh, cold beer and wine store, and a lot of people come in off Twenty-fourth Avenue, and they will, um, either go into the parking lot, or they will access angle parking that is on, uh, 153A Street. At the top left of 153A Street, where it meets Twenty-fourth Avenue, there's also Tina's Hair Design, and you can see cars parked there, and, uh, they back out on the 153A Street. So, living on this street for fifteen years, I've seen a lot of near misses due to the congestion right there, and I'm wondering, uh, two things. Number one, is there any way that we could have that parking garage exit and entrance come over to 153A Street where there is none of this congestion? Um, the second question is, if you have to keep it where it is, is there any way to have the development people, uh, contribute to sidewalks and curbs to make it safe for pedestrians? Because, um, this is actually a large pedestrian corridor where you have people heading north to use a crosswalk to go to Peninsula Village Mall, or head south to access a trail that goes to Jesse Lee Elementary School. So, um, that's the current situation, uh, you're putting it, uh, a big development into that area, and I think if you're going to cause, uh, a lot more congestion, you should be, um, expected to contribute to a solution. Could you go to the next, uh, piece of paper, please?
Well, just, just while, that, while we're on this one. The, the development there will contribute and build, um, sidewalks on their portion, like, on their property, so development pays for, um, that infrastructure, so they will be putting partial infrastructure in place.
Um, I thought that was going to be the case with the Bears and Liquor Store, but they were allowed to, um, have angle parking instead of putting a sidewalk in. And I was just wondering-
Yeah, I don't know who owns that complex, cause I think there's Pure Pharmacy, there's a number that, so I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, could we go to the next, uh, slide? Thank you. This is, um, this is another problem. We have a, um, a delivery truck parked on the wrong side of the road, uh, it's stationary, it usually parks there fifteen, twenty minutes, that's to deliver the cold beer and wine store, uh, wine. So you can see, we only have one, uh, path through 153A Street. Uh, the red and black cars on the left will be backing out, the, the angle parking on the right will be backing out, and we have people coming in off Twenty-fourth Avenue at high speed to try and get to this cold beer and wine store. Um, so this is a bad location. I didn't say guys and pickup trucks. Um, so we have an existing problem. Uh, if you're pushing your, your stroller down the street, where are you gonna go? There's no sidewalk on the right, there's no sidewalk on the left, and there's only one path for a car coming on, uh, southbound towards you, and that's right down the middle. So this is a dangerous situation, and, uh, adding eighty-one, um, parking, uh, cars coming onto that, from that, uh, access ramp, seems like a really bad idea. And I'm wondering, is there any way we could have that coming out on the other street, 153A? It's just too busy for that.
You mean 153?
153A is where it's gonna be, I like it on 153.
That's, yeah, 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 that's right.
And that's, that's really all I have to say, is it's, uh, it's a really dangerous situation, and, uh, I can't see adding more congestion is gonna do anything but cause injuries.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Now, is there anyone that, uh, has any concerns about this? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Glenn Jones, I'm 2302 153A Street. Uh, my only concern is that the public hearing this time was at the, uh, Semiamu Housing Society, and not held at a public site like it was last time, where city staff were overwhelmed with two-hundred-and-twenty-five people, and didn't have enough paperwork to give out to everybody. So I feel like it's sort of stuck with the people that wanna develop it, and we haven't had a proper consultation, other than coming to council.
Okay, what, maybe we can ask, what, what was the process in terms of public consultation?
Uh, Madam Mayor, the recent public information meeting was held by the applicant, um, in response to the current proposal. I think the delegation is talking about, uh, uh, two or three years ago, the, uh, staff came out to, uh, to the, uh, neighborhood, and there was a public information meeting regarding a proposed east-west road, and, uh, we were looking into, um, obtaining the public, uh, feedback on that proposal, somewhat related to Semiamu House, but also as a bigger picture item. Uh, the new official community plan and, uh, or, sorry, the new Semiamu Town Center Plan has since addressed, uh, a bigger, broader issue of, um, road connectivity and, uh, along our frequent transit networks, and, and that is the initiative in which we will look to achieve, um, or, or further, uh, investigate, uh, roadways, uh, in, in this neighborhood to help with the finer grid network.
Okay.
Maybe only, my only concern was just, more information on a third-party site would be fantastic.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else that, uh, would like to raise some concerns? Okay, now I've got a long list of, uh, the remaining speakers are all in favor of it, so, um, we'll try to, to, Roxanne Muchler? That was a struggle. Muchler, yeah. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, my name is Roxanne Muchler. It's a long name, lots of consonants, I apologize. Um, I've been a resident of Surrey for the last thirty years. My address is 13955 Laurel Drive. This is my mother, Joan Pope. She is sixty-nine years old, she's lived in Surrey as well for the last thirty years. There's two things, I don't wanna take your time tonight, I, but I wanna convey two things to you. The first of all is, um, to encourage council to approve the rezoning application, to allow this housing project to move forward. And the second thing I wanna convey to you is, uh, the significance of this project, and the need for Semiamu House Society to take the lead on this. So I'm my mother's advocate, and it's a very unique situation. Um, it is very hard to advocate and have a voice when you are developmentally, uh, delayed. My mother has witnessed it over the course of seventy years. If we could tell you what life was like forty years ago, and the isolation and the stigma, and just that alone, and now that we're at a place today where I'm asking council to encourage a place where my mother can live in the community, it's just so significant. And so, as her advocate, this program provides housing that we've never seen for her before. Um, my husband and I, with family and Semiamu House Society, support her in being independent. It happens, it's not perfect, but this housing development makes that much more achievable and much more, um, in her hands, which is the goal. And so, um, I've not seen anything like this. We've lived in housing projects, we've lived in subsidized housing, we've lived in basement suites, I, I put a letter forth to council outlining our, our efforts. Um, housing is not ideal, um, options are limited because of financial constraints, and, um, while mom appreciates where she lives, this is a place where she could be a proud, a proud member of her community. Treehouse is, the Treehouse facility of Semiamu, Semiamu House Society is right by where this facility is, and that's my mom's home, and, and that's where she is proud to be, and, and that's where she identifies, and that's where her support network is. So that application and that rezoning needs to happen there, because that's her home, and that's a community for so many, uh, people, and it's just integral there. And second of all, just to encourage you to allow this to happen, sorry, I'm very nervous, but also, just to acknowledge the work that Semiamu House Society has done, the vision that they have. They have the plan, they have the infrastructure. You ask them questions about what about this, it can be a complex, uh, issue, they have answers, they have the vision, but you have the power to make this reality for us, and, and I ask you, and encourage you, to please allow this redevelopment to go forward, so we can go forward.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Very well said.
Excuse me, may I?
You forgot something.
Oh, but I wanna say one more, one thing.
Yeah?
I'm Roxanne's mom. I've been there three years, and I'm doing really good. I made stuff, I, I'd like to know, to say hello to you, I heard so much about you, so hi.
Okay, so we've got twenty-six more people, so, um, and if you, if you don't wanna speak, that's okay, you can just raise your hand and, and just say we're, we're in support of it. And so maybe I'll call for that first. So, um, can we just see, have a show of hands of, of the people here that are in support of this project? Perfect, okay. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward to say anything? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doug Tennant, Executive Director, Semiamu House Society, 15306 24th Avenue. This project, as you know, is being ongoing for about eleven years, and, uh, we do have a lot of people who wanted to speak for it, but I think you understand from just hearing that first, uh, envoy, that, uh, people feel very heartfelt, and it's very important to them that this project is built. It's a project that, I think, in two thousand and six, you came out and gave us some advice about, and Counselor Vilnev, Counselor Martin, Counselor Hepner have also been involved with advice, and the city staff has been very supportive as well. Um, it's a project that has been going on for eleven years, but for the people that we support, it's a lifetime, and it's a model that will be held up for the rest of British Columbia, Canada, and perhaps the world to look at. It's one that hasn't really been done before. Twenty of the units are for people with developmental disabilities, they will be fully included in that building with fifty-one units, uh, quality rental units, which I know Counselor Hepner, just reading in the newspaper lately, that's something that the city has a great desire and a need for. And, uh, so we see this project not only as a benefit for people that we support, who should be fully included in their communities, but also a benefit for the city of Surrey. And so, just wanted to say how much we appreciate your support, uh, throughout this whole project, and, uh, look forward to working with you going forward on this project as well.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, is there anybody else that wanted to say? Yep?
Hi there, uh, my name is Brooke, and my address is 9094 161 Street. Um, I'm here speaking on behalf of my brother, he's a person with a developmental disability. And the Semiamu House Society has been a large part of our life for many years. Uh, my brother is part of a day program. He gets up every morning and gets on his handy-dart bus and goes to where he has a sense of purpose. He needs that in his life to be able to feel needed and important. He loves the sense of independence that he gets when he's able to go to work. This sense of independence is what every human being needs, regardless of their developmental age. This proposed development plan to build housing for people like my brother would give him and many others the basic human right to feel that independence. The multi-unit apartment proposal would provide him a safe and affordable place to live. He would be able to gain a social aspect as well, living with people he sees at the society. This proposal is so different from the many that most certainly come across your desk, and others that we've seen today. Um, it isn't for, uh, multi-unit townhouse condos, or, uh, building sixteen lots out of one. Um, it's the opportunity to give those with developmental disabilities the chance to have a life that many of us grew up to have, and then take for granted. My brother has been hoping for this since the first mention of it, and so has our family. It would give us some sense of comfort, knowing that he has a place to go when my parents retire, something they have not been able to think about, because they are uneasy about what will become. Sorry, I'm emotional, cause I'm-
That's okay, that's okay. It's an emotional-
Um, and I just feel that we, as a responsible community, one who should be looking out for one another, would be remiss in not granting this proposal. Integration is key to normalcy, and this is a leap in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Hi. You wanna say your name and address for the record?
My name, my name is Alexa Leawold, and my address is 166295 26B Avenue in Surrey. Hi, my, my name is Alexa, and I'm twenty-seven years old, and this is my best friend Stacy, and she is thirty-one years old. We have, we have been working for many years in the kitchen services program at Semiamu House. We have learned many skills and have catered many weddings, festivals, and different events. Our job, our friends, our regular leisure programs are all at Semiamu House. This is our home away from home. When we heard that Semiamu House wants to build apartments right next door, and we said yes, count us in. We have watched our childrens move out and live independently, and now it's our turn. Please say yes to this, to this perfect housing solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Um, is there, is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number 18272? First call, second call?
Hi there.
Hi.
My name's Rosalind Maldoon, I live at 341606-
My name's Rosalind de Maldoun. I live at 341606 185 Avenue in Surrey. My daughter Caitlin is part of the kitchen crew. She's one of the catering staff at Semiamu House. And I'm not going to go through her story. It's an amazing success story, but this is going to be the next step for her, independent living. And one of her older sisters once made the comment to me that having Caitlin in our lives has made us better people. And I can assure you that having these wonderful people from Semiamu House living independently here will make us a better community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Okay, so bylaw number 18, 18272, first call, second call, third and final call. That concludes that... Last. You'll be the last speaker.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Ward, and I live at 2334 153rd Street. So I live two houses behind the Semiamu House. And I'm not against them having their home there. I think that's great, but I just feel that a big thought has to be put in the scale of it. Like, that's all like single-family homes around there. We have small, narrow streets. Ditches aren't filled in, no sidewalks, and seventy-one units going in. For them to have twenty of their homes just seems like an awful large scale for that area. And what will we do with all the traffic? Because right now, living two houses from them, we're putting up with traffic constantly coming and going, handy darts coming and going, people being parked up and down our streets on both sides. So getting in and out of the driveways are hard. So it's just all that that I'm concerned about. You know, just, I mean, they're having twenty homes for them, but what about the other fifty-one homes? Is that, you know, do they really need that many there? It'd be nice if it was on a smaller scale. That's all I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, we're going to go into committee reports. We'll start with Public Art Advisory Committee. Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Please...
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Please, committee?
Move the minutes of June 16th.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move the minutes be received for transportation and infrastructure, June 16th.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move the minutes be received of Parks, Recreation, Sport Tourism of June 18th.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move the recommendation be adopted.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move the board of variance, June 11, 2014.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Okay, Mayor's Report. We have a proclamation. The Buddhist Compassion Relief Sutchi Foundation, originated in Taiwan, is one of the most active charitable organizations in the world. In celebration of the twenty-second anniversary of the Buddhist Compassion Relief Sutchi Foundation, Canada, Sutchi continues its service in the community. Therefore, let it be resolved that I declare August 30th, 2014, as Sutchi Day in the city of Surrey. Organized labor is always endeavored to maintain and improve good working conditions and wage standards for Canadian workers. Therefore, let it be resolved that I declare September 1st to 7th as Union Label Buying Week in the city of Surrey, and call upon all citizens to support the products and services identified by the Union Label Store Card, Shop Card, and Service Button. There's just one other issue I'd like to bring up. And I think we've, we've had some significant, had some significant discussion around this, and it, and it is around the, the policy of the provincial government to ensure that students are living in a catchment first before the schools will be built. And that's been their policy, I think, from 1974. And I'd like us to put forward a motion. So I'll put forward a motion that requests the policy be amended, the provincial policy be amended, that, for communities with growing populations.
I'll promote.
Second.
Second. And, and the reason I bring this forward is because, you know, this policy really sets, sets everything that we do here in the city up for failure because they will not build a school until the students are in the catchment area, and it is just counter, counterproductive to what we want to do. Because any time we plan a community, we've always identified the parks, the schools, and everything else. And I think that we need to move forward with advocating on that behalf. But also too, I mean, I think we'll, I'll propose that we strike a tri-party review panel with the province, the city, and the school district in terms of reviewing the funding model and reviewing that policy. So I'll move that. If somebody can second that as well. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Okay, corporate reports. We are starting with R132.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
R133 is out of order.
Yep.
So, move recommendations of R134, the award contract.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R135.
Move the traffic improvement projects.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R136.
Move 136, additional work for contract, 1713006, increase scope of construction connector road.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R137.
Move the closure of road adjacent to 6045 138 Street.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, contrary, that is carried. R138.
Move the development coordinated works at 152 Street Road Works.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R139.
Move rail safety initiatives update. Second.
Councillor Vilnev?
Thank you. This is a very comprehensive report on the rail safety initiatives that are occurring in, across Canada, but also with our staff. And I, I just really appreciated having all of it summarized because there's been a lot of work to date. And there's information on the delays in the crossing of the railway tracks, the senior government initiatives, the rail emergency protocols, the grade crossing regulations, the Robert Banks Terminal and the Crescent Beach community issues, and the BNSF possible relocation of tracks. So I want to point out that I think this report is really important to send to some of our ratepayer organizations that are dealing with rail safety concerns and the noise issues. I know there's been a number of community meetings about this issue, and council has certainly taken a strong stand on the expansion of Fraser Port until they have an independent health assessment and also public hearings, which has been our position to date. And so we have not achieved that. So we are still advocating for those, that kind of assessment before they make a decision. But I think what's really important is that we continue our work and let the communities know that we're aware of the issue and the issue of slope instability, the possibilities there with the heavy trains that are going across. And I noticed on the rail crossing initiative, the recommendation is going to be that there are no sitting trains for more than five minutes blocking access in and out. Well, it wouldn't be really clear, and I think people in the community are concerned because actually when the trains are moving, they're blocking those accesses from ten to twelve minutes to date. Because there's up to a hundred and twenty-five cars on the trains now, and they're frequent. Four or five years ago, there used to be six trains on those tracks. Now there's eighteen to twenty a day. So of course, we've heard a lot about the consistent whistleblowing issue that's really affecting the livability of adjacent communities and communities that are actually distant from the railway tracks. So it's an issue we have to continue discussions with. But, but I think that we really need to be concerned about the length of trains and the fact that the access and egress in a number of these crossings eventually may not even meet federal regulations because of the length of the trains. So it's an issue that I want to bring forward tonight to have us constantly evaluate from a safety perspective. But I think that it doesn't have the kind of attention that it needs yet from a federal level. And I know that they actually are responsible for the rail safety issues and dealing with the railways. So it's something that we should reemphasize when we have our dealings with our Federal Transport Minister. So other than that, I'm, I'm really pleased and proud of the work that the city has done, mainly because a lot of the approvals and for expansion of the coal port or for rail safety is not really our responsibility. But what our responsibility is really is to advocate on behalf of our residents because we've seen and heard about a number of derailments because of the older train cars or because of tracks or because of loose brakes, et cetera. So I think it's instilled fear, a fear that actually should be there somewhat for people in communities. So we need to do everything we can to avoid something like that or know that we are doing that as a city. So I appreciate staff's work and just encourage us to, to keep up the momentum, but also to, to make sure that the community has access to this information. So the question I'd like to ask first of all, is this available on the website? Because it's quite a comprehensive report. So if you can make that information public in ways and even the city page, I think that would be helpful and give some assurance to people that have been working for several years now on this issue, that the city is on their side.
Yeah, and thank you very much. And I know it's been, I think that this report's been up on our website since Friday, I believe. But also too, I think it's important to, to ensure that that information gets to the Crescent, Crescent Beach Property Ratepayers Association at one of their meetings. So we can certainly forward that over. But I really think we need to keep this on the forefront and keep the pressure on because there are some significant issues that we've highlighted, and I don't think we can back off of that. And we have to keep pushing forward because, I mean, there's some significant issues that, that have to be dealt with. And, you know, the length of trains. I mean, we've, we've had numerous conversations about all of the transport of goods and everything else, so.
Well, Madam Mayor, I want to emphasize that the train whistling is really starting to affect people's health. So I know that the railway is claiming that it's a safety measure, but when it becomes a health issue for people because of the level of the whistling, the number of times that they whistle going through communities, I, I think it's something we have to continually have a conversation about with the railway. Because they understand the need for safety on the tracks, but not to a level that it's jeopardizing the quality of life in communities that it's starting to do today. So just want to bring that to your attention.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. One of the things we talked about earlier, and thank you very much. I, the report is just so comprehensive and so valuable. So I appreciate it being here. One of the things we talked about was that slope stability issue and whether or not within the criteria of that BNSF analysis that has been developed by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the Minister Rate, Federal Minister Rate, who insisted on making sure all the railways comply to those twenty-eight points. Have we actually asked BNSF to increase that number to include the slope stability analysis as well?
Yeah, I think we have.
We will be, through the mayor, we will be continuing to have dialogue with BNSF, and we are having discussions with them in terms of, of slope stability. At this point in time, they are monitoring it on a regular basis and have been addressing any slope issues.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if perhaps we couldn't send this report to Brock at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities? Because before our next council meeting, I have a meeting with, with the directors there, so that would be helpful at the national level. Thank you.
And, and as well, the DCM, see the mayors from across Canada as well, when we meet, that's, that's on top of mind as well. So we'll hit it from, from all, yeah, we'll hit it from all fronts. So, all righty, I will call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R140.
Move the increase in expenditure for contract for the Roberts Bank Rail Quarter.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R142.
Move the second quarter report.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R143.
Move the bylaw enforcement activities report for the second quarter. Second.
All in favor, contrary, and that is carried. And I just want to, just on that, just on that point, I just want to, want to thank our manager bylaws here, you know, for making all, you know, this information public. I know that, you know, because there's been some, there's been some court cases and things like that, we typically know it. But I think it's really important to ensure that the general public has, has that information and can really monitor the good works that are being done. So I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. R145, Heritage Rail.
Move the Heritage Rail Demonstration Project, additional funding.
Do I have a second or?
Second.
Okay. Call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. All right, moving on to third reading.
Move third on one. Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
On real CP on two, move third.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move third on zoning on two.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number three. What's the wish of council?
I'll move third on three, David.
And I'll second for same purpose.
Okay.
Councillor Gill.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Mayor, I was just reflecting on the public hearing, and I know that in the corporate report, it indicates that the operations would not operate from midnight to 6:00 AM. However, that being said, I recall that the, the owner indicated that they may go to 1:45. Just kind of looking for that clarification in terms of staff.
Madam...
Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, through you to Councillor Gill. The delegation, I believe, was referring to the hours at his Richmond facility, and the facility that is proposed here in Surrey would be restricted to 12:00 AM. And just for public information, that we are proposing that this would continue until midnight for one consecutive year, and then they would have an opportunity to come back to council and make a request to extend hours if need be. Correct? Yes, that is staff's recommendation.
Madam Mayor, we could also include a good neighbor agreement as part of this application.
Very good idea.
Councillor...
If council wishes.
I have some sympathy for how close this might be to the residential and not knowing, I mean, it's the first time we've had something that is called real-life escape. It sounds like a juxtaposition to me. But I'd have, I'd like a little bit more analysis of how that's going to play out. And so I'm actually having some sympathy relative to the time of night that that's going to go on till, and those folk, twenty or twenty-four of them, are going to excitedly leave on the basis of either they escaped or they're, they're let go. But I'm, I'm wondering if we really do need it till midnight, if we couldn't say, look, let's see how this goes, and stop it at 10 o'clock at night. And, I mean, that's what we do with heavy construction even. So I, I'm not inclined to support it in its current form. I kind of like to send it back and have just either a better analysis of other businesses like this, and that we ourselves took a look at what that looks like. But in its current shape, I have sympathy with the neighbors.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second that.
Sorry.
Do I have a second? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councillor Hain on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I listened carefully to what the applicant was, was saying, and I, and I kind of rung, through with me that he said, you know, I could put a Boston Pizza in here and operate till 2:00 in the morning on the weekend with the current zoning that, that exists and so on. So, you know, I have sympathy towards that as well. And, but I would certainly support a sort of a cautious approach on, on the lateness of the opening throughout the evening. And I would strongly urge a good neighbor agreement to accompany that and see how it goes. And I would strongly urge a good neighbor agreement to accompany that and see how it goes.
Okay. Okay, so on the referral, Counselor Steele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I know a lot of businesses do use these forms of activity for team building, and I think that's important to their business, so I agree with that. And rather than see this just die, I would like to see it do a year or so up to 10 o'clock a.m., or 10 o'clock p.m., pardon me, and just see how it goes.
Yep. So I think there has to be some conversation with the applicant in that regard. So I think the referral back to staff to have those conversations is appropriate, and if you can bring it back to us. Now, I think our next meeting is, well, I think it's, it's next week. So, you know, and that may give council members an opportunity to look at the other facility in Richmond. So, all right, I'll call the question on the referral. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number four.
I can move the recommendation on four.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number five.
Wait, it says just a minute. Be withheld.
Move the recommendation on five.
I'll second.
Oh, hang on a sec, just meant we needed to.
Be withheld until it was all.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, no, we're good. That was the recommendation. Okay, so five.
Move third reading on five.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move final on five.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on six.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on seven.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on zoning on seven as well.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on eight.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
On nine on the OCP, move third.
Second.
All in favor.
On again.
That's on number nine?
On number nine.
On number nine.
With a question.
Okay. Just on that one, I know that there was some conversation in terms of the widening of King George, which I think is a really valid point in terms of just having that traffic properly flow. So if we can, and also the light there. So I think if we can, maybe before it comes back, to have those issues addressed. And I do believe that the applicant had said that they were going to review some of the Arbor's report. So if we can get all of that back prior to fourth, that would be great. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, oh, sorry, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, sorry about that. Just for clarification from my own self and from for council. I was under the understanding that we will not build on a floodplain. Is that correct?
It was what?
That we would not build.
But that's why there's the eight-foot fill.
Please explain to me.
Yes.
Mr. Engineer.
Yeah, through the chair. We did write a policy some years ago to control development in the floodplain because of the risks of development floodplain. Certain areas, we felt, can move forward to finish off. I says this is one of those areas, property to the east of this one developed with the intention of this one moving forward as well. And this more or less completes the development in that cell.
So this was sort of put through before that policy came out, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
So this was sort of thought about before that policy was?
It was analyzed as part of the project that came forward to the east. And we understood that this was one potential site where we could move forward to finalize an area where there would be development in the floodplain.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Counselor Gil.
I guess I just, I mean, personally, I'm apprehensive about this project. And we did talk about that at land use and the issues that we had. I understand the drainage has been rectified, but just the density in the area and the proximity of the river and the floodplain area, I'm apprehensive about it because of climate change and a few other things. So I'm not confident that this high density in this particular spot with the amount of fill that has to be brought in is really in the area's best interest. I don't think it's personally the best site for a high-density development either because it's really not in close proximity to anything but a bus stop. And I know it's important to be on transit, but in some ways, I don't, that outweighs, doesn't outweigh my sort of unconscious fears about this project, so that's why I'm not supporting it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
So Madam Mayor, I'm going to move third on the zoning on the same, number nine.
Do I have a second or?
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Madam Mayor, I do recall that you mentioned something about the lights, but I think that perhaps we could have the project have, be a condition of the project moving forward on the fourth that the lights actually do get installed prior to the project moving forward.
Okay, yeah, I think what we've, they're coming back with the widening of King George.
And the lights.
The lights at that corner. And, oops, there's, the, there was another one.
Arbor's report.
Arbor's report, yeah. Okay. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number 10.
Move third on the OCP on 10.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move third on zoning on 10.
Second.
And there was a mention just in terms of the planting, the tree canopy. And I think, you know, given the, because it's fairly vacant right now, that, you know, the work with that piece was, I think is going to be important. So I'll add those comments to it. I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Number 11. Oh, yeah, okay. Just, yeah, you have a conflict. You're on the board. Okay.
Second.
And I think just on this one here, you know, I go to Pure Pharmacy a fair amount. And I think the issues that have really exacerbated the parking in there is that walking clinic. And they are parking on the street. I mean, I've gone in there and there's been no parking spots where it's just insane. So I think we actually really need to go in there and either put in, you know, whether it's some non, you know, no parking signs on the streetway. But there's definitely some issues there that have to be addressed. So I think we need to definitely take a look at that. Counselor Hain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd certainly be supporting the project. I think Seminole House Society is an amazing asset in our community, and I want to support them wholeheartedly. But one of the delegations did bring up an interesting idea, and that was the ingress and egress of the underground parking to 153 instead of 153A. And I don't know what the feasibility of that is, but it might be worthy of having a look at, well, before we could.
It's possible. Okay. Let's have a look at that. Alrighty, I will call the question. All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
So on 11, move third on the zoning as well.
Move third on zoning on 11.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Okay. Counselor Martin. Okay. Number 12, final adoptions. Is there anyone wishing to make representation to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. 13, is there anyone wishing to make representations on this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Introductions, 14.
Move the introduction first on 14.
Do I have a second or?
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried.
Move second.
Second.
All in favor.
And move third.
Contrary, carried.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
And move first on 15.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
And move third on development cost charge by law.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Same on 16, move first.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All in favor.
And move third.
Contrary, carried.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. Okay, Clerk's Report. 1A. All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 1B.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. 2A.
Move 2A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2B.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2C.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2D.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2E.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 2F.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
And move G.
No concerns.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried. Development permit, 3A.
Move 3A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 3, 4A.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 5A.
Second.
All in favor, temporary, referred back to, yeah. Oh, no.
No.
Okay, no, all in favor, contrary, carried.
Move 6.
6.
Move 6.
Move the recommendation. Appointments to the Lower Fraser Valley Exhibition Association, all in favor. Contrary, carried, 7A. Cloverdale BIA.
Exceed their receipt of their audited financial statements.
Second.
All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Okay, are there any notices of motion?
No.
Okay, I just want to make mention, actually, under other business here. And I know Counselor Martin's going to make a few comments as well. I just wanted to thank staff and all of the work that was done over this weekend for the Fusion Festival for two days. It was a great event, and I've heard a lot of good comments come back from the community in terms of really enjoying themselves. Counselor Martin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to also thank our staff and John Donlin Associates and all of the volunteers that worked tirelessly for hours. And even in the pouring rain yesterday morning, everybody had a smile on their face and everybody was having a very good time. And so I think it was one of the best festivals that we've had. If we could top last year, I don't know. But anyway, I just really want to express my appreciation for all the hard work.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Alrighty, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, contrary, that is carried. Thank you very.